We are live.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty, Minifee County Board of Education Special Call Meeting. First item of business tonight is going to be roll call. Board Member Evans.
Here.
Board Member Cooper.
Here.
Board Member Smith.
Here.
Board Member Manus.
Here.
And I am here. Next, uh, next item of business, adopt the agenda. I make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented. Do I have a second? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Student recognition and staff recognitions.
We don't have any.
Don't have anything on that?
No.
Okay, construction report.
Mr. Lake with Tim Murphy, Murphy Group is here to discuss that with you.
Well, thank you for having me tonight. Mr. Murphy sends his regards. He's on vacation, a much deserved vacation, so he sends his regards. I am your construction administrator through Murphy Group Architects, and I visit the job a minimum of one, one time a month, but I've been there twice in the last two weeks. And so with your permission tonight, I'll go on and give you a a brief update on how we stand on the project today. Approximately, we're approximately sixty percent complete on our project. We still have the May twenty eighth substantial completion date as our target, and as of right now, we see no reason not to make that date. Notes, some items of interest that are very important, so that we may stay on schedule with our construction. The, we'll start with the exterior, some of the site work. We've had a natural gas line installed this week. Today it was being tested. The reason for the natural gas is for the temporary heating during the winter months. It's important to maintain a certain temperature inside the buildings for the finishes. And so we're going to try to maintain a fifty degree temperature inside the building during the winter months. By doing that, it will let our finishes cure, the finishes will stay in specification, and also that will keep them in warranty. Items such as paints, drywall finishes, mastic finishes, a lot of the floor finishes, wall finishes, these need to, to maintain a constant temperature. The good news about this is we were going to heat with butane, and now we're going to heat with natural gas. So there should be a significant savings to the project. There'll be four one million BTU heaters placed around the project, none of which will be on the second floor because we, we're going to anticipate the heat from the bottom floor, heating the second floor of the classroom building. So Alan Wells is superintendent of Pax Walker, who's on site daily. He'll maintain the temperature and also will monitor the gas usage. He'll be our, um, he'll be the gentleman, our point man on site so that we can monitor this, this usage, and he'll be responsible for that. We expect the heat to not start any sooner, or the temporary heat to not start any sooner than November the first. And, but anyway, we'll be ready. The lines are being tested today. So that's the good news. That'll let us work inside the building. Also, what I think is important, but well, I want to talk about the interior of the building and why the heating is so important, but also I want to let you know that the subgrade today for the playground, the playground area was brought to a subgrade today, and we expect the playground contractor to begin their work November the first. And I think everybody has agreed that the, with the design for the playground and its location. So we're very excited about that. Also today, they should have finished pouring the dumpster pad, which it's in adjacent to our loading dock. And that's very important. The steps on the sidewalks all have been poured. So that's very important for our area, and it should keep it from being muddy and kind of a mess on the exterior around that end of the building. So that's all cleaned up and in very good shape on that side. As we stay on the exterior, I want to discuss the roofing. So far, the classroom addition or the classroom wing has been shingled completely. The rest of the building is dried in. That means that the gymnasium and the cafeteria areas have the TPO roofing over that. It's dried in. The rest of the area, the admin area, the kitchen and dry storage, those areas, they're dried in with underlayment, roofing underlayment. Once the spray foam insulation has been applied at the exterior walls in that area and completed, which we expect is next week, then we'll start receiving those metal panels. But before that, we'll finish our shingling work in that area. So again, we're working towards moving to the interior of our building so that we complete those tasks this winter and stay, stay on track and stay on schedule to complete, to be substantially complete May the twenty eighth. Again, the spray foam activities should be complete in the next day or so, and with that, we'll start applying the metal panels also on the exterior. The masonry has been washed down. That's very important because we want to start installing our windows. That too will help us control our temperature in the building. So we expect that to happen very soon. The windows are ready to begin now. Some of the, the product is on site. The windows should be installed by twelve twenty-four. So once again, the first coat of paint is, has been applied on the first floor of the classroom addition. That's important so that we also don't affect our windows or have any overspray on our window frames or damage those in any way once they're in place. Where we have completed our hanging of gypsum board on the first floor. And on the second floor, we have started hanging gypsum board on one side of the walls with insulation, soundproofing insulation on the interior. And next we'll, we'll come in and button up the other side of the wall with, with drywall materials, gypsum board materials, and we'll start painting upstairs. In all of these areas, we'll continue our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing rough in. As these walls continue to be built and these ceilings continue to be constructed, we'll be installing these MEP items as well, and that will also help us maintain control of our environment this winter.
Okay, he went to me.
Hey Jim, we've lost you. Jim.
And it slows production down. That's what we all believe about a messy environment like that. So I think we're prepared to get started for the winter months on our construction. The other project I'd like to comment on is the bleacher project. Lori, I might defer to you. I saw Lori yesterday. I also went by the bleacher project at the high school. The materials are on the interior of the building. However, and again, Lori, I might defer to you on this. Apparently, the motors that were delivered to the building for the bleachers to move them in and out, apparently those were, were the wrong motors for our project. We had anticipated finishing this project, the contractor did, by October, by the end of October. And I'm not sure whether that's going to happen or not because of what we found out yesterday. Lori, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, what's going to happen is they're going to go ahead and put the bleachers up, and then when the, with the motors come in, it was a back order from due to COVID in their factory, and they're going to bring the motors in and put those in after the bleachers are up. Now, that's not pivotal, but that will allow for our kids to use the GM.
Thanks, Lori.
No problem.
But otherwise, it looked like they were ready to go. All the equipment has been staged and it's ready to go together. That usually goes quickly. So hopefully we'll have good news by our next meeting on the bleachers. That's my pro, that's my report tonight. If I can answer some of your questions, I'll certainly try to do my best to answer your questions.
Kelly has actually put a video out. He did another drone footage. It's a really nice video, and it's, it's pretty impressive to, to watch. I think it's on our website now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. So there being no, no questions, I thank you for your time. Tim Murphy will be back for your next meeting. And if anybody should ever have any questions, please give us a call. Lori knows how to get in touch with us, and we'll help any way that we possibly can, and I appreciate your time tonight very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. How are you, Lori? Munis balance sheet.
Okay. Now where am I at? All right. So if you look at the Munis balance sheet here, you'll note in our general fund, as of the end of September, we have one point one million dollars. In Fund Two, we have negative twenty thousand. The district activity, which is the school's money, is forty-six thousand. The student activity, which is also the school's money, is forty-seven thousand. The capital outlay fund has forty-five thousand. Your other forty-five will come in in June or May of twenty twenty-one. Your building fund, which is your nickel money, is four hundred and fifty-seven thousand. Your construction fund has nine point four million in it. Your debt service is a negative one seventy-seven, and that's just a journal entry where I moved funds out of your nickel into your debt service. I used to do that in January. And your food service has ninety-eight thousand in it right now. There's your balance sheet.
Any questions or discussion? Now I make a motion, Munis balance sheets.
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the Munis balance sheet, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Monthly financial report.
All right. So here's your monthly financial report. If you look at this, sorry, got to going too quick. Where am I at? There you go. There I go. Yeah. Um, if you look here, you'll see year to date, we received two point four million dollars. This time last year was three point two. I'm sorry, don't know where I've topped my head what that is. I knew the other day, you believe that? Oh, last year we received a lot of franchise in September, and we did this year, but what I did is I went ahead, we take a portion of our property taxes and put it into the nickel fund, and I went ahead and used that, those tax dollars and put it in the nickel fund. That's why it had so much, the funds in it. So it kind of reduced our general fund for right now, but that will come back to us when we get our first payment from the taxes by December tenth. Yeah, I thought that was. And then on expenditures, you're looking at, we've only spent one point four million this time last year, one point four, and contingency is around five hundred thousand. And that's very conservative.
Any questions or discussions? Now I make a motion to approve the monthly financial report.
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the monthly financial report, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Bank reconciliation.
Okay, if you look at your bank reconciliation for September, we have a, a reconcile balance of eleven million, one hundred and one thousand in our bank account. Of course, if you look here, nine million, five hundred thousand is actually in our construction account where we're earning that interest on it. And this month, we earned, I'm thinking it was right around twelve thousand dollars. Let's see. Yes, twelve thousand, three hundred and ten dollars and twenty-two cents. So we're still doing pretty good, even though interest rates have went down significantly from what we had. But we're still doing pretty good on that interest, so it's going to be enough to more than pay for our playgrounds that we've been talking about doing with it.
Any questions or discussions?
I'll make a motion. I'll second Matt's motion.
All those in favor of approving the bank reconciliation, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Cash flow statement.
All right. On your cash flow statement, you can see that I've taken out, I've replaced our numbers for this month to last year's numbers and reduced it by our bond fund. Our balance, our balance in the account is one point six million in our general fund account, not including any bonding. And I'm projecting, if you look down at the bottom, around eight hundred thousand dollars in the general fund at the end of the year, barring something wild happening.
It is twenty twenty after all, right?
That's where I'm at in my life.
I make a motion, will you approve the cash flow statement?
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the cash flow statement, signify by saying aye. Motion carries.
You are Matt. Yeah, but he usually, you want to talk about the consent items, or would you like me to? Greg.
Oh, it doesn't matter. Go ahead.
Of course, we've got our consent items here, which are our board minutes, our subsequent claims, current claims and salaries, which is what you guys see every week. We're approving an extra service. We got, we received a grant for tools for getting along, and she's already completed all the work for this year, and there's an extra service of a thousand dollars. This is, this is the last time for this grant, so we didn't put it on our salary schedule. Then we have a resolution to participate in the Kista loan program to purchase a new bus. You guys are used to these. This is it right here. It says, "A resolution of the Board of Education authorizing the execution of an equipment lease and security agreement between the Kentucky Interlocal School Transportation Association and the Board providing for the acquisition and leasing of school buses and approving generally the plan of financing the acquisition of school buses for and on behalf of the Board." And here's the, hang on just a second. I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Spencer.
All right. Sorry about that. I have been in interviews. Sorry about that. You are on consent items?
Yeah.
Okay, Kista loan program of buses, we've already pretty self-explanatory. We'll be purchasing one bus that will keep us in the rotation. First degree scholarship program, we've been working with the high school guidance counselor, Mrs. Schwartz. We have selected a male and female to go on to KSBA, and they will have an opportunity of one out of a hundred and seventy-one school districts to get that scholarship for KSBA first degree scholarship. And then the amendment of the job description for DTC is we've just made that updated to try to make that more of an instructional leader within the district. So, and then the other is FMLA for employee number four two six. So those are your consent agenda items.
I make a motion to approve the consent items if there's no discretion.
I'll second.
All those in favor of approving the consent items, signify by saying aye. Motion carries. Doesn't look like there's any discussion. Approval items, personnel notification.
I'm getting there, Greg.
I've got it, you're fine.
I gotta say, she's got all the tabs open at the top. I can see them on her screen.
That one. There you go.
Okay. Personnel, we only have one with two resignations. Cook and Bots Elementary, Karen Maynard, and then, or is that new personnel, Karen Maynard?
No, she's resigned.
Resigned, and then resignation of Kelly Weiss. Kelly has accepted the district technology coordinator position at Paris Independent, and we have gave Kelly a farewell dinner this afternoon luncheon and had a very good day with Kelly, and we appreciate the work that Kelly's done for the districts for a long time. Kelly, what, eleven, twelve years? Well, anyway, he wants to speak, so I'm going to let Kelly speak for a moment. Unmute Kelly.
I take this away.
I don't know, but you've got some nice looking moves there coming along.
Okay, sorry about that.
I think you teach dance over Paris.
It's been a pleasure working here. Let me go in another room.
We're, we're enjoying watching this, Kelly.
It's just the way I've got this set up to record. So it's been a pleasure working here. So I'm going to get off here because it's feedbacking.
Come up to my office, Kelly.
It's just the way I've got this set up to record.
And Miss Franklin has you pulled up. Boy, he looks so much better now, doesn't he? Okay, we're all, we've all got our mask on. I'll share you in the office. So Kelly's on his way.
I make, I make a motion not to approve Kelly's resignation.
Sorry, it's just the way I got it set up.
I held, I held it for a few days, Greg, so.
Okay, so. So, uh, yeah, it's been ten years, some good years. It's a family down here that we talked about earlier. It's tough. But I'm thinking about it's going to be closer to home and a little more time with my wife and my little girl. So, um, dang on, I'm so emotional. It's going to be tough, but I'm confident in the, you're all going to hire next to, to take over for me, and I get to come back and train them. And out, so I get to show them what I do. So I'm not leaving. I'll always be a, a phone call or an email or a FaceTime away, so. Yep, it's been a, been a good run.
Well, we'll miss you, Kelly.
Well, thank you.
Thank you for everything.
Appreciate it.
And a privilege. We appreciate you.
Thank you. You know. Thank you all.
Good luck to you.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly. I do want to miss reflect that we are very appreciative of the work that Kelly's done going into these Zoom meetings and going into the, within our COVID, Kelly has been phenomenal in working with us and making sure that the Chromebooks and working with our staff members with getting technology out, we're setting up a community access point. So the person selected to replace him, we're still working on that, but they've got big shoes to fill and and we will have Kelly, we will, I did work it out till we can call him and, and maybe seek his advice for a few days. So, but anyway, wish you, we wish him the very best in his future endeavors.
Absolutely.
And that is all of the that is all the resonate, or the personnel announcement.
The community report.
Okay, the community report, just like to the Christian Appalachian Project, KAT Learning Kits, Children Incorporated, Money for Meals to Grow, WellCare, five hundred dollars to YSC, five hundred to FRY, FR, or FRC, and a hundred dollar donation for Thanksgiving food baskets. So do want to thank the community for their part and, and their, their support for the school district.
First of all, an instructional support updates.
Okay, I'll start with Minifee, Minifee High School or Minifee Elementary. Ms. Means has just shared that all students that have chosen in-person instruction have returned to school on a hybrid model, and we are working, and Ms. Pelfrey will go with that in just a few moments, as plans to move into a four-day week and work to identify issues and make necessary changes. All first and fifth grade students completed already diagnostic assessments to give data so teachers can determine interventions and area of focus. And also have an eighth grade night planned for next Tuesday, October the twentieth. For the boys' basketball season, started with our first practice and look forward to a successful season. And then Minifee High School report, congratulations to the boys soccer team for being runner-up to sixty-first district. They lost championship last night to Round County, but we're very proud of, of all of our student athletes on the boys soccer team, our coaches, and we also commend all the work that the high school administration, AD, coaches, and everyone that has done in order to prepare us for this season. So next week, the boys will advance on the region, and they'll take on Boyd County, at Boyd County at six o'clock Saturday, October the seventeenth. Congratulations to Emily Banks and James Mays for being recognized as a KBSA scholarship, ones that will submit their names on to KSBA. The Advanced Kentucky Grant offers incentives to individual students who earn qualifying scores of visible twenty twenty AP math and science and English exams. The incentives will be here within the months to be given out. Those students will receive a hundred dollars for each grade three, four, or five. Congratulations for all those students that qualify. So very pleased with the way things are going at the high school and Minifee Elementary as we start trying to phase back in with in-person instruction. So.
I had a question.
Go ahead.
Um, I know that this is complex because we're on the hybrid model, and we have people that are doing it, doing their education by, you know, all virtual. But do we have any idea what our average daily attendance is right now? Do we have any idea of more students that would have usually been homeschooled have opted to do some virtual education or anything like that?
I'm going to let Ms. Pelfrey come over. I don't know, you know, we, we have to really start thinking about attendance. We really can't take attendance as we've normally been taking. It's now referenced as participation, but she can probably give you an idea of, of where we are with the current students we have enrolled and as well as maybe the homeschool. So I'll let her talk for just a few moments and also let her talk about as we plan to open and reopen for K five instruction and in class. So I'll let her take over here.
Hi, how's everybody this afternoon? Evening.
Hi, how's everybody this afternoon? Evening. Time's got no way to change right. So in reference to your question, like Mr. Spencer said, the way that we're calculating everything right now is by student participation for all of those students who are at home participating virtually. And so our, our teachers, at the end of every week, they look back on the week and mark student participation for Monday through Friday. And where we're looking right now is closer to about 90% of participation, which when you compare that to our average daily attendance is, is pretty close. And of course, right now, and we're still in the beginning stages of working all that out in terms of students moving from in-person back to online, and we've had a lot of changes and shifts. And, you know, as things change with our number of positive cases of COVID, of course, we do have some changes and some moving around. And so KDE is actually giving us an opportunity over the next two weeks to clean up a lot of that data. So I'll have some definite numbers for you in about two weeks. And in terms of our in-person classes, students are doing really well. Those who have said, yes, I want to come back to school, they are coming back to school. So we've made just a few changes and adjustments for those students who, like I said, have changed their mind or parents who didn't feel comfortable with in-person classes. So now that we've gotten that worked out and students seem to be just falling right into place, just, we definitely just need a little bit of time and consistency. Because it's different, you know, it's new for everybody, new for our students and new for our parents, but things seem to be going very well. Do you have questions about that?
No, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there, do, in, as far as seeing, how far out are we going to be before we maybe start the four day? Move on from the Harvard move?
Our plan right now is that after, after two very successful weeks, our plan right now is to look at the date of November 2nd in our first day back for our kindergarten through fifth grade students. We know how important it is to have all of our students in person, but we really want to focus on our elementary students. It seems as though our middle and high are definitely more capable of working through Zoom lessons and working in Google Classroom, but we really want to have, you know, FaceTime with the teachers more frequently for our elementary school students. So our first focus is going to be to get our elementary school students back in the building for four days, which that, that goal is November 2nd. And I think we have every, everything in place to do that right now. We actually met this morning and reviewed our numbers. With continued social distancing, we're going to have to make a few little shifts, but I think it's definitely possible. Everybody seems very happy and excited to be back at school more than two days. So we'll be doing four days in person and one day virtual. And, you know, that's our plan right now. And then moving forward, we'll take another look at our middle school and high school.
Sounds good.
Do you guys have questions about moving forward to in-person four days?
I know my son went back yesterday was his first day back. And I pounded him with questions when he got home, you know, how are things going? You know, did you mind your mask? You know, all this. And, and he, he actually really enjoyed it. He said, Mom, it was good to see what people were there and, and that he, he kind of liked staying in one classroom and having the teachers come to him. So, you know, he, he had a real positive experience. So I was glad to hear that because I was worried. He's in middle school. So, you know, that's a tough age anyways, but but he was, he was telling me all the things that you all had done, you know, bringing up water and doing the schedules for the bathrooms and you all have got it all worked out and it seems like it's working wonderful. So I want to tell everybody, thank you for that.
Yes, it's, it's definitely been a team effort. Teachers are working so hard, our administrators are working so hard, custodians, you know, everybody who works in the cafeteria, our bus drivers, everybody's just going above and beyond to make it a positive experience for our students. And from what we're hearing, it has been a positive experience. That's why we definitely want to try to get them back in four days, especially for our elementary school kids.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Top base minutes. Anybody questions on that? We got the KSBA Winter Symposium.
If anyone wishes to attend that, I think it's December the 3rd through the 5th, please send your information to Mrs. Spencer and she will get you registered for that. So also that is in Louisville at the Marriott downtown. So I think it's the night of the 3rd and the, 3rd and 4th.
How is everybody on their training? Anybody liking anything?
I like a little bit. I'm going to try to go to that symposium, finish it up.
We should be, we should be getting a report and I'll have Ms. Spencer reach out to get your update. That way everybody will know where they are. I'll have her contact them Tuesday of, Monday or Tuesday of next week. And that will kind of give everybody an opportunity to see where you are. And then the KSBA online fall meeting, if you want to attend that, just let her know and register for that, but that'll be a virtual meeting.
Do we have anything on communication and sharing?
I would just like to say to the board members that if you have, would like to take a tour of the new school, please just let me know. Send me a text message or an email and I'll work it out with our construction managers to give you a tour as soon as you, you'd like to do so. So I'm actually going to take off a couple of days for this tomorrow and Monday and be back on Tuesday. So if you'd like to go up and look at the new school, I think Mr. Lee gave you all a very in-depth overview a few moments ago. And but if you'd like to go and actually see the work, just let me know and I'll be happy to, to get you up there. Other than that, just appreciate everyone's cooperation. And we're working very diligently to, to get back in class as soon as we possibly can. Given all the guidelines and the stipulations that have been stipulated by the Kentucky Department of Public Health and all the social distancing guidelines, we're really, I want to commend the staff. They're doing a great job right now of getting back on board.
Did, did we have anything online? Any questions or anything from her?
The only thing that was online was Beth Brown wanted to wish Kelly Weiss best wishes and thank him for his services to the Menifee County School District. And other than that.
I think we all concur.
Yeah.
That's the only comment that we have.
Okay. Don't have anything else? I make a adjourn.
Take it.
All those in favor of adjourned, signify by saying aye. We are adjourned. Everybody have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
See you, everybody.